Councilor Forbeck.
Here.
Counselor Keys.
Here.
Counselor Levy.
Here.
Counselor Pruschel.
Here.
President Duncan.
Here.
All councilors are present.
Counselors, I ask that you please mute your phones at this time, and I would like to ask everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have item three, which is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. Three A is proclamation declaring March 26, 2021 as Black Hawk Bank Day, celebrating their 140th anniversary. It reads as follows: Whereas Black Hawk Bank, originally known as Beloit Savings Bank, received a certificate of organization on March 26, 1881; and whereas Black Hawk Bank has served individuals, families, and business owners throughout southern Wisconsin and northern Illinois for 140 years; and whereas Black Hawk-
Lori Stottler, we lost your, we lost your microphone.
Well, I've been reading a whole bunch. I'll start over. Item 3A is a proclamation declaring March 26, 2021 as Black Hawk Bank Day, celebrating their 140th anniversary. Whereas Black Hawk Bank, originally known as Black Hawk Savings Bank, received a certificate of organization then on March 26, 1881; and whereas Black Hawk Bank has served individuals, families, and business owners throughout southern Wisconsin and northern Illinois for 140 years; and whereas Black Hawk Bank is guided by core community banking values such as quality service, accessibility, and responsiveness, each of which create exceptional experiences that deliver exceptional results; and whereas Black Hawk Bank employs over 250 people and operates 11 full-service banking centers in Rock County and Winnebago, Boone, McHenry, Lake, and Kane Counties in Illinois; and whereas Black Hawk Bank has served the Beloit community since 1881 from its office located in downtown Beloit; and whereas through this demonstrated commitment to the greater Beloit community, local residents and business owners can enjoy the benefits of convenient local banking and trusted thought leadership from its advisors; and whereas Black Hawk Bank takes pride in being a strong corporate citizen by being obsessed with their client success, communicating in ways that engage and inform, learning and teaching, and by giving and being grateful; and whereas Black Hawk Bank is celebrating 140 years of giving back to the communities it serves and offering unique banking solutions and relationships to clients. Now therefore, the city, Council of the City of Beloit, Wisconsin does hereby proclaim Friday, March 26, 2021 as Black Hawk Bank Day in the city of Beloit and acknowledges the contributions of Black Hawk Bank to the community on their 140th anniversary. Presented this 15th day of March 2021, Regina Duncan, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. At this time, I would like to, accepting the proclamation, are Todd James, who's the Executive Vice President and CFO of Black Hawk Bank, and Loriann is joining him, Robertson. She's the Senior Marketing Specialist for Black Hawk Bank. I just want to say congratulations to Black Hawk Bank for your 140 years of service to our community. I'm smiling, you probably can't see behind this mask, but thank you. Now, I have this proclamation for you, but I understand you want to have some photos.
If I could take a couple photos, that would be wonderful.
We can do that. Why don't you come up front? I know we have to stand six feet apart, but we'll do the best we can. Okay. Sarah, can you take our photos? She's got it.
Thanks for having me. Thank you so much.
And usually we have the podium, so.
If you want to say it, Mark, you're one of the same. You actually face this way and the cameras will show you.
Right. And then I'll take your photo and I'll get it to you.
All right. On behalf of Black Hawk Bank, I really do appreciate the recognition from the city of Beloit, and it has absolutely been our pleasure to serve this community for the last 140 years. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you coming this afternoon. Next, we have item-
Item-
3B.
3B is a proclamation declaring intent of city of Beloit to be carbon neutral by 2040, and it reads as follows: Whereas the city of Beloit maintains the goal of being an eco municipality which aspires to develop an ecologically, economically, and socially healthy community for the long term. A sustainable municipality means basic economic, social, and security needs without undermining the natural resource base and the environmental quality. And whereas the goal of a sustainable organization is to have biological systems remain diverse and productive over time, Beloit increasingly supports initiatives to carry out sustainable development projects such as green building programs, open space preservation, public space beautification, recycling, and smart growth planning. And whereas the concept of sustainability remains embedded in the city of Beloit's strategic plan, every individual goal is defined to create and sustain, incorporating the idea that sustainability is not a project, it's a way of life and governance. And whereas a strong community sustainability commitment manifested in energy-efficient operations, green spaces, clean streets, and waterways, and clean air are indicative of a city that is investing in its future and very desirable for individuals and employers seeking to relocate to the area. And whereas reducing GHG emissions will reduce local air pollution and improve public health, whereas climate change is known to lead to longer and more intense heat waves, increased intensity of storms, flooding, droughts, loss of sea ice, extinctions, sea level rise, threats to human health, and loss of agricultural output. And whereas the United States is a world leader in clean energy technology, and renewable energy is the fastest-growing energy source in the country. And whereas in 2011, the city of Beloit installed photovoltaic solar panels on the roof of the police department. The energy produced by these panels ties into the electrical system at City Hall and reduces the amount of energy that the city purchases. Beloit has produced 315.6 MWH of solar energy to date, which is the equivalent of 5,710 trees saved. And whereas Alliant Energy, the utility for the city of Beloit, has committed to accelerate their sustainability goals to eliminate all coal from their generation fleet by 2040 and aspires to achieve net zero-carbon emissions from the electricity they generate by 2050. And whereas our current generation has a moral obligation to leave a habitable planet to the next and future generations. And whereas careful and ongoing planning is necessary to understand what is practical in the short term while increasing efforts in the mid- and long-term target ranges where technological advancements occur and costs decline. And whereas these goals are in accordance with the goals of the state of Wisconsin, which supports and encourages communities to commit to sourcing energy from renewable sources through the Office of Energy Innovation, Energy Independent Communities, known as the EIC, and through Governor Evers' Executive Order Number 38 relating to clean energy in Wisconsin. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Beloit that we will support state, federal, and international efforts to reduce GHG emissions with the goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2040. Approved this 15th day of March 2021, City Council of the City of Beloit, Regina Duncan, President.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. At this time, if I could ask Brenda K. Plackens to come forward, she's here from the Welty Environmental Center to accept it. I have the proclamation, but you may want to share a few words.
So I do have a few comments. I'm so pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of Welty Environmental Center. Thank you to President Duncan, City Manager Luther, and the whole Beloit City Council for inviting me and my organization to be a part of these proceedings. Welty has been operating in the Stateline region since 1999. Our mission is to provide leadership in environmental education and equitably engage the diverse residents of the Stateline area with activities that foster an appreciation of nature and promote environmental stewardship. First at Beckman Mill County Park, and now since 2015 at Big Hill Center, we achieve this mission by partnering with many organizations across the community to create ecological awareness, make connections with nature, and enjoy the beautiful natural resources of the Beloit region. Whether we are helping with burns and hosting parsnip grazing goats on the Big Hill Prairie, wading with Big Hill Adventure Campers at Leeson Park, leading the Stateline Boys and Girls Club on a trip to the Merrill Community Garden to pick tomatoes, or collecting Rock River macro invertebrates with the Beloit School District 5th graders, our primary goal is to inspire people to take care of our planet and its systems. This proclamation emphasizes both appreciation and stewardship of our natural resources by recognizing the importance of reducing greenhouse gases to prevent the worst effects of climate change. Welty Environmental Center supports this critical first step toward developing and implementing strategies to become carbon neutral. Thank you for this opportunity to participate in the conversation, and we look forward to collaborating with the city of Beloit on this important work. Thanks again.
Thank you, Brenda.
Item 3C is our-
Just, just a second, just a second. Thank you very much, Brenda, for what you're doing and the important work that you're doing at Welty. But I know there was a counselor that just had a couple brief comments to make to you, and I believe that's Counselor Keys. You may go ahead, Counselor Keys.
Thank you, President Duncan. My brief comment is one of appreciation and hope. Thank you to Brenda from the Welty Environmental Center for receiving and speaking to this proclamation. And second, thank you to the rest of the city council staff and leadership for supporting action addressing such an important issue. This, bringing the proclamation was a great opportunity to highlight and reflect on many of Beloit's environmental and sustainability initiatives over the last 15 years, and also a great time to look ahead at the challenges as well as the opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And Brenda, I have some photos for you. I'll make sure you get them.
Go free.
Okay. Thank you for being here. You may proceed, Counselor, I mean Clerk Stottler.
Okay. Moving on to item 3C, State of the City Address. President Duncan.
Welcome to the State of the City. One year ago, we were gathered in this very same room to call a state of emergency for the city of Beloit. The city council empowered city staff to respond to the immediate threat of COVID-19. There were a lot of unknowns about the virus, and over the course of the last year, all of our lives were completely changed. We are thankful for all of the sacrifices made by those in our community. Thank you, especially to those working on the front lines in healthcare or as a first responder, in the police, fire, and public works department, as well as to all those workers who provided core services such as cleaning and groceries. We know that it was draining in our community, especially for our frontline workers. Each decision that the city made throughout this time was in the context of doing everything possible to keep our employees and the public safe. Even with these efforts, like communities all over the world, Beloit experienced great loss throughout the pandemic. My own family was touched. Nearly six dozen Beloiters lost their lives to COVID-19. They are mourned by their friends and loved ones. Any loss of life is one too many, and we must continue to work diligently to stop the spread of the virus and provide access to vaccines to all so that we can safely return to gatherings and events. Please continue to follow safety guidelines. Please get the vaccine when it's your turn, socially distance, and wear your mask when you're with people who are outside your household. Our community has certainly struggled and sacrificed throughout this time, but we see hope. We are proud of the work that the city has done in the last year. While responding to COVID-19, just last week, staff began giving vaccines to homebound individuals. Whereas a year ago, little was known about the virus, and staff spent the initial few months securing supplies, adjusting staffing schedules, and implementing unprecedented changes to keep staff and the community safe. Initial concerns about continuity of operations were addressed. We are proud that we were able to provide core services to the community. There were no pauses in critically important services like policing, fire and emergency, medical services, snow plowing, solid waste, pickup or recycling, and having quality drinking water. In turn, the community went above and beyond to donate supplies and to sew masks. Local distilleries stepped up to provide hand sanitizer. We received other personal protective equipment items from tattoo shops and supply companies. City staff worked diligently to partner with the Wisconsin National Guard to bring community testing to Beloit. When our Hispanic community members were seeing a disproportionate number of cases, our staff created content in Spanish. Our Parks and Recreation Staff came up with creative and innovative ways to engage residents with virtual activities, curbside pickup, craft kits, and more. Our Beloit Public Library, despite being closed for two months, kept the Wi-Fi on so that job seekers and others could access the internet while sitting or being parked outside of the building. Drive-up service, digital offerings, and virtual storytime became the norm as families looked for ways to stay engaged, informed, and even entertained. Administering two significant elections are not without challenges. During non-emergency times, city employees from all our departments and volunteers stepped up to ensure that the election will be fair, accessible, and safe. The murder of George Floyd created civil unrest across the country. In Beloit, peaceful demonstrations shared the message that black lives matter. We will continue to strive for justice and equity for all people. We see hope because our police department had already enacted progressive policies that benefit our entire community, like body cameras. This establishes transparency and builds trust. Our hiring practices have also been modernized to take appropriate recruiting and outreach steps to ensure that the workforce is more reflective of the community that we serve. We see hope when, for the first time in history, we developed formal regional partnerships with our neighbors for shared services. We approved a sewer service agreement and sharing of a fire chief with the town of Beloit with fire and medical responders crossing municipal boundary lines. Together, this gives us the opportunity to provide a more comprehensive level of care. We see hope in organizations like Axe Housing, which has helped more than a dozen low-income families achieve the dream of home ownership. We see hope as 1,200 jobs were created with the opening of the Amazon Distribution Warehouse. We see hope as our city's sound financial practices have made strides, including through our increased bond rating that will lower our interest rates. We see hope in our NARSA neighborhoods, which have had a combined $1.7 million in residential improvements in the last two years. We see hope with all of economic development activity and the construction of ABC Stadium and the renovations for the new home of Visit Beloit and the former, and the former Angel Museum. We see hope with the significant growth in our community. New transit routes serve the Gateway Industrial Park to help connect the workforce to employers. We are optimistic that we could see a groundbreaking for the whole chunk entertainment destination yet this year. We see hope that by working together, we will grow even stronger because of our diversity, through our valued public and private partnerships, and due to our community spirit. And in closing this evening, I just want to say that it has been an honor to serve as the council president for the last two years, and it is bittersweet to turn over the reins next month. Thank you to my fellow city councilors and to our Beloit residents who provided me the opportunity to serve on this body and as council president for the last two years. We've experienced a lot of change and growth over this time, and I am confident that the positive momentum will continue. We have a great deal to feel hopeful about throughout the remainder of 2020 and beyond, and we will all move forward as a community because we are all in this together, Beloit. And thank you all that are here this evening.
Are you ready for item four, Madam President?
I am.
Your public hearings. Item 4A is consideration of ordinance number 3696, amending the zoning district map of the city of Beloit for the property located at 2315 Prairie Avenue from C1 Office District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. This is first reading.
At this time, our Community Development Director, Julie Christensen, will provide us with an overview.
2315 Prairie Avenue, it is Teachers Credit Union, and it is located at the corner of Prairie Avenue and Robin Road. They are requesting a rezoning to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District. The city of Beloit's comprehensive plan does show this property as appropriate for neighborhood commercial uses, which is a land use category intended for a neighborhood scale, residential office and neighborhood supporting institutional and commercial land uses, and C2 zoning is consistent with this future land use recommendation. The zoning map amendment findings of fact are included in your packet, and they outline the rationale for the rezoning. At Plan Commission's last meeting, they held a public hearing on this particular item, and they did recommend approval, 6-0, recommend approval of this zoning map amendment to C2. This is on your agenda for a public hearing and first reading only.
Thank you, Julie. At this time, the public hearing is open. Would the clerk treasurer please provide any public input that was received?
I did not receive any written input on this item.
Thank you. Would anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Rick Brunton. I live at 751 Euclid Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of approval for this. The process began primarily through Teachers Credit Union looking for a new sign that had a digital component to it. Unfortunately, because they're C1 zoning right now, it doesn't afford them the same benefits of a digital sign that is experienced by the three surrounding properties being two churches and a school. So they wanted to get their business up to current levels of advertising and marketing capabilities. So that's how this process started. C1 does not allow for that type of sign, C2 does.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brunton. Appreciate you coming. At this time, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or oppose at this time wanting to come forward? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed. This is a first reading, so can I please have a motion to lay over this item?
Counselor Keys, so moved.
Motion by-
Counselor Forbeck, I stopped it.
Okay. We had a motion by Counselor Keys and a second by Counselor Forbeck. Now I'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President, it was pretty clear in the packet. Thank you.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I believe that all nearby businesses or residents have been notified of this potential change. That's a question.
Yes, they have been notified.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow up, I believe that was in our packets, too. So Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No. Between the Plan Commission meeting and our packets, everything is very clear. Thank you.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to lay over the ordinance. Can I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item 4B is presentation of the 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as the CAPER, for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Clerk Stottler. At this time, the Deputy Community Development Director, Terry Downing, will give us a presentation. And just so everyone's aware, no formal action is required on this particular item.
Thank you, President Duncan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, requires each CDVG formula 90 to submit a consolidated annual performance report, or CAPER, at the end of each program year. The, this year-end report includes the activities and accomplishments of the city's community development block grant funding for 2020. This is a public hearing only, as President Duncan said, and no action needs to be taken. Thirty-day public comment period is, started on February 26th and will go through March 26th. During that thirty-day public comment period, the CAPER is available for review at City Hall, in the Community Development Department, at Beloit Public Library, and on the city's website, on the Community Development web page. Any comments submitted during the thirty-day public review period and during the public hearing will be incorporated into the CAPER for submission to HUD. The CAPER must be submitted to HUD on March 30th of 2021. I do have a short presentation just to talk about the accomplishments that happened over 2020. I'm not sure if you'd like to hold the public hearing after that presentation or beforehand.
Why don't you go ahead and present?
Okay. Okay. So this presentation, just because there are NARSA accomplishments and items we funded and activities we funded under the NARSA, also under this 2020 grant. So in this presentation, we'll talk about the regular CDVG funding first, and then the NARSA CDVG funding. What is not in this presentation is the three allocations we got under the COVID-related CDVG, that CV1, CV2, and CV3. That's because we're, the entities that we funded are still carrying out those activities, so we don't have the end numbers yet. So you'll hear those accomplishments next year during the CAPER breakdown. So I can start with the regular CDVG funding. This is just an overall CDVG breakdown and the percentages that went towards the goal categories that we identified in our consolidated plan. To remind you, the consolidated plan is the five-year plan that the city adopted for how we're going to allocate our CDVG funds over the next five years. And those categories are affordable housing, homeless services, case management, job skills, and to improve the housing stock. As a reminder, because you'll see that homeless services, case management, job skills, and affordable housing are a smaller portion of the pie, just to- Just a reminder that we're only allowed to do fifteen percent or give fifteen percent of the funds to public services, which case management, job skills, and homeless services fall under that public service cap. You'll see more of those kind of activities when I get to the NARSA section, because we were able to fund those activities in the NARSA section. Next slide, please. So the public service breakdown under the regular CDVG went to homeless services, case management, and job future-ready skills. Forty-four percent went to case management. And if you remember, that was one of the major funding priorities that the CDA recommended and the council adopted, that we focus our funds towards case management. Studies and, studies have shown, and our steering committee strongly believes that case management is a huge, is a bigger component to a household's success than just handing over money. So case management helps with other resources and support for that household, while also providing funds to the household for success. Next slide, please. Public service results. So in our annual plan, in our consolidated plan, and in our annual plan, we're required to outline goals that we are supposed to achieve. So you'll see for homeless services, we had outlined or predicted we could help almost 500 people. Case management, 521 people, and job skills, 218. You'll see that we've fallen below our goals this year. That is because in 2020, with the COVID-related, with the pandemic, some of our agencies were closed down for a while until everybody kind of got a handle on how they could handle, how they could deal with having people come in and provide services under the new, you know, social distancing rules and things like that. We're also required to report on the ethnicity of our beneficiaries that receive the funds. So you'll see that pie chart there in the blue and the red for Hispanic and non-Hispanic families. Next slide, please. We are also required, HUD requires us to report on race. So these are the numbers and the breakdown of the residents in Beloit that we served based on their racial makeup. So one of the things that we look at is just to make sure that we're helping the, we're reflecting in our assistance, the diversity that our community has. And I think that we're doing a great job in that area, and I haven't seen any concerns there. Next slide, please. Public service results as far as income. We're required to track those beneficiaries who are receiving CDVG funds through the agencies. They are required to check the income of the beneficiaries to make sure that they qualify and report those back to us, and then we have to report that to HUD. So you'll see that most of the funds, almost seventy-five percent of our funding, is going to the lowest-income folks in our community, which is what we want to see. We want to make sure that we're helping those who need it the most. And then the next highest level is the thirty-one to fifty percent of the annual median income. And then the next highest income and the lowest are those that are of highest income in our community, which is still only eighty-one to a hundred percent of the area median income. So it's still considered low income. Next slide, please. Housing activities that we've done with our regular CDVG program is the City of Beloit Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program. We provided six housing rehab loans with no or low interest, deferred interest grants, or forgivable loans. Neighbor Works Black Hawk Region, we provided funding to Neighbor Works Black Hawk Region for down payment assistance and closing costs. So they were able to assist eighteen low- to moderate-income households for homebuyers in Beloit through the NARSA funding, program income, and unrestricted CDVG funds. Next slide, please. I should mention about the last slide, we only gave out six CDVG loans under our Housing Rehab Loan Program. We also saw a drop in number due to the COVID pandemic. We also have other funding, so we have home funding that we also provide loans through. So we have other loans that we've provided. That just showed the number of CDVG loans. Code enforcement and public and private improvements. Our code enforcement program is funded partially by CDVG funds. We administered, I'm sorry, performed 5,283 inspections and for 2,089 units that are inspected. The public improvements and private improvements. Public improvements are about $1.3 million. Private improvements in the low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods is about 28 million. No, is that right? Twenty-eight million, yes. And in the rest of the community, about 45 million. This is not funded through CDVG, but we are required by HUD in the CAPER to report leverage dollars. So not only what CDVG is doing, but what the city is also providing funds for in order to improve the community. Next slide, please. This starts the section for the NARSA funding allocation. So we funded a total of $148,892 for NARSA activities. It's the same categories, the affordable housing, homeless services, case management, future-ready skills, and to improve the housing stock. You'll see that case management services takes up the largest portion of the pie. And that is, again, because the funding priority that was recommended by CDA and adopted by City Council required us to provide priority for those agencies that were providing case management. The second highest or second-largest portion of the pie is homeless services. The council felt, and CDA felt strongly, that homeless services needed to be addressed in a better way in this consolidated planning cycle. So we made sure that the funding allocations were going towards those priorities. The next highest level was for future-ready skills training, and that is also one of the items that was listed in the priority that the council adopted. Next slide, please. NARSA Public Services Breakdown is the homeless services, case management, and job future-ready skills. So the three main things that we decided were highest priority in this consolidated planning cycle and for this annual plan are reflected in the pie chart. Over half of the NARSA public services also went to case management. This shows the number of households or individuals that were served in the 2020 CDVG cycle. Again, we had to list the goals that we thought we could meet, and then we have to show what actual goals or what actual numbers we did meet. So you'll see again that our actual numbers are a little lower than our goals. And again, it's the same reason, there was quite a few months there where we weren't sure what was going on with the pandemic. Some of our agencies were closed, and we have to explain to HUD why we didn't meet our goals, and that's how we explained it in the CAPER. Next slide, please. Again, we have to report the racial makeup of our beneficiaries. So this pie chart shows the different beneficiaries by race, and so you'll see the pie chart there. Next slide, please. NARSA Public Services Results. Again, we're required to report on the ethnicity of our beneficiaries. So you'll see the pie chart there on top. And then the beneficiary income is, we're also required to report on that for the NARSA activities, even though it's an area benefit, or not really an area benefit, but we're only serving two neighborhoods. So you'll see that the lowest-income cohort are the ones who are receiving most of the benefit of our NARSA funding. Next slide, please. And then NARSA Housing and Other Accomplishments. Neighbor Works Black Hawk Region was able to give five households down payment or closing cost assistance in the NARSA neighborhoods. That means people of low to moderate income actually purchased homes in those neighborhoods. The City of Beloit Housing Rehab Loan Program, we gave four homeowners housing rehab loans in the NARSA neighborhoods. The code enforcement program, we're able to complete 3,052 inspections in the NARSA neighborhoods. And then we did conduct two neighborhood cleanups in the NARSA neighborhoods, one in Summit Park and one at the Beloit Historical Society. It was a little bit different this year than it was the previous year. The previous year, we had little, we had the police come out and serve hot dogs, grill hot dogs, and cook for the kids, and we had a DJ and things like that. Because of the pandemic, we couldn't do that this year, but the neighborhood cleanups were still very successful, even without the little community fair that we held the year before. That might be the last slide, but, yeah, that's the last slide. Are there any questions before we go into the public hearing?
Are there any questions or from councilors at this time? Alrighty, then. Excuse me, is that Counselor Blakely?
Yes, it is. No, I just wanted to thank Terry Downing for all her hard work and the well-organized presentation this evening. Thanks, Terry.
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'll echo that too, Counselor Blakely. I'm sure all the councils feel the same way. We're happy to be able to help those who are most, who are in need in our community. So thank you, Terry, for your efforts and all the work you're doing on that. At this, at this time, the public hearing is now open. With the clerk treasurer, please provide any public input that we've received.
I did not receive any written public input on this item.
Okay. Would anyone else wishing to speak, or someone, if you're wishing to speak in favor or oppose on this particular, on this particular item, please come forward at this time? Final call. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or oppose, please come forward. The public hearing is now closed.
Item five is public comments.
We've reached the point on our agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain, and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam clerk, were there any public comments submitted prior to the meeting? And I believe there are. So we'll be.
Yes, Madam President, there are eleven written public comments pertaining to the proclamation on carbon neutral.
Okay, would you go ahead and read those? And then we have some here too as well. So if you could go ahead and get started with those ones, that'd be great.
I sure will. If you catch me speeding, pull me over. The first one is from Matt Johnson. Says, hello, I would like to submit the following public comment in regard to the proclamation declaring intent of the city of Beloit to be carbon neutral by 2040 during the Monday, March fifteenth meeting. My name is Matt Johnson. I'm a Field Operations Director for the Wisconsin Land and Liberty Coalition. The Wisconsin Land and Liberty Coalition is a nonprofit effort focused on building education, awareness, and support for renewable energy projects in the state of Wisconsin. As wind and solar power become more cost-effective over the decade, Wisconsin has seen an increase in renewable energy projects. From rooftop solar on businesses and homes to utility-scale renewable energy projects, Wisconsin is transitioning to more renewable energy and will continue to do so for decades. Rock County is going to be a leader of renewable energy in the state of Wisconsin. The proclamation declaring intent of the city of Beloit to be carbon neutral by 2040 is an excellent step in moving towards more renewable energy in Rock County. Solar and wind power greatly benefits communities with jobs and depending on the size of the project, land lease projects, and shared revenue payments. Thank you. The second is from Kathy Grogan. I strongly urge you to support the proclamation expressing a city goal of net-zero carbon emissions by 2040. The climate news becomes more dire with each passing day, yet Congress has failed to take meaningful action. State, county, and municipal leaders, including the City of Janesville and Rock County Board of Supervisors, are stepping up to the climate emergency by passing resolutions endorsing federal action and by making their own commitments to reduce emissions. By issuing the proclamation, the city of Beloit takes an important step in advancing the goal of all climate initiatives preserving the livability of our planet. Next is Connie Byer. With the changes we've seen in our weather patterns and the extremes we have experienced, I would encourage Beloit to join other cities in supporting a proclamation by the city council to be carbon neutral by 2040. While the approach and tools may not be obvious right now, it is imperative that we start a process that sets that goal. It's too easy to set this aside and hope for change. We, as concerned citizens and elected leaders, must set the goal and find ways to start the process. I appreciate the council's willingness to face this challenge head-on and look forward to supporting the plans that are born from this effort. 2040 will be here before we know it, and it must be protect our environment for generations to come. Thanks, Eugene G. Byer. David Reich says chemistry. I live in Janesville, but I retired from 25 years of work in Beloit. I'm happy to see that the city of Beloit is taking a stand to go carbon neutral. Resolutions like this are important, not only for good of the city itself and the local health, but this is the definition of grassroots involvement. Our people we send to Washington can't hear individual voices, but a resolution from one of Wisconsin's larger cities may get their attention. Thank you. James Zumstein says, I'm writing to speak in favor of Beloit making a commitment to achieve carbon neutrality by 2040. It is imperative that government officials at all levels, local, state, and federal, are on the working, are all working at reducing carbon emissions. By committing to reducing these emissions, Beloit will be improving the lives of all its citizens by reducing local air pollution, will help create jobs in the growing renewable energy field, and will be seen as a leader in fighting climate change. Passing this proclamation of intent will further enhance the community already made by Governor Tony Evers in fighting climate change, and will inform Wisconsin's representatives in the US Congress that the citizens they represent want action taken at the federal level on this subject. As Chair of the Sustainable Janesville Committee, I'm proud that our city recently made a commitment to achieve carbon neutrality by 2050, and I encourage Beloit to join us in displaying leadership in fighting climate change. Jenny Hoopel writes, I support our, I support our city going carbon neutral. My wish list for that includes turning Strong Park into an oak savanna prairie with a path along the middle and inter, inter, oh boy, interpretational signs to serve as an outdoor classroom for Todd School. Implementing a citywide compost collection system to run in conjunction with the trash and recycling collection, more community gardens, like the Merrill Community Garden, running a campaign to make public transportation more accessible and to educate people who are currently utilizing it on how and why they should do so. The more of us who use it, the more convenient it becomes, the less emissions our city produces on the whole. Putting more solar panels on city buildings and on the lawn at the sewage treatment plant with native prairie underneath to reduce moat costs. Thank you for your time and leadership. Caleb Locrants writes, my name is Caleb Locrants. I'm a Rock County Board Supervisor for the City of Beloit in Wards One and Twelve. I'm writing today to urge your passage of the proposed carbon neutral proclamation. It's a responsibility for local governments to protect their citizens and the land in which we are entrusted to protect. The climate crisis poses one of the largest existential threats that we have ever faced. The passage of this City of Beloit Carbon Neutral Proclamation is crucial. However, it should only be the beginning. The City of Beloit needs to seek out other policies such as native prairie grass and wildflower planting, green space additions, and the banning of pesticides, herbicides that leak into the watershed. These are all, these will all save money, cut carbon, and make Beloit a leading community on environmental issues. Thank you for your consideration. Kathy in Bill Flanagan writes, we're very pleased to read about the proclamation by the City of Beloit in support of state, federal, and international efforts to reduce GHC emissions with the goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2040. We are definitely in support of Beloit maintaining the goal of being a sustainable municipality which supports green building programs, energy-efficient operations, reducing GHC emissions by supporting clean energy technology and renewable energy such as the photovoltaic solar panels on the roof. solar panels on the roof of Beloit Police Department. We believe that not only does the City Council need to support the sustainability commitment, but the citizens need to become educated as to these goals, the importance, and what we all can do individually to participate. We believe that pressure should be placed on Alliant Energy to eliminate coal from their generation fleet before 2040 and to work to achieve net-zero carbon emissions before 2050. We need to work harder as a community to achieve these critical goals sooner than currently projected. The community can't help it if they are not aware of how crucial it is for Beloit to become a sustainable municipality and what we can all do to achieve the goals. Let's work to educate all our citizens so that we can be a part of the solution. Thank you all for what you're doing for Beloit." Susan Adams, Ph.D., says, "The LWV, the League of Women Voters of Beloit, strongly supports going carbon neutral as soon as we can. We support this proclamation, and our national position is, the League's position statement on, on climate change policy as announced by the National Board, January 2019. The League believes that climate change is a serious threat facing our nation and our planet. The League believes that an interrelated approach to combating climate change, including through energy conservation, air pollution controls, building resilience, and promotion of renewable resources, is necessary to protect public health and defend the overall integrity of the global ecosystem. The League supports climate goals and policies that are consistent with the best available climate science and that will ensure a stable climate system for future generations. Individuals, communities, and governments must continue to address this issue while considering the ramifications of their decision at all levels. Our own League has been studying the issue locally, and we are presenting a three-part series on climate change. Together with the Beloit Public Library and the Wealthy Environment Center, we have presented two sessions in our climate change series, with one more scheduled for this Thursday at 6:30. It's co-sponsored by the UW Madison Badger Talks. Dominique Brosser will emphasize the need to, for clear, easy-to-understand communication about climate change issues. You can access the, these programs off the library's Facebook page. Thank you for your forward thinking on the issue." And Jim Farrell says, "My name is Jim Farrell, I'm a member of the Janesville City Council. I strongly support the proclamation to become carbon neutral by 2040, as we passed a similar resolution in Janesville last week. For the David Suzuki Foundation, climate change describes a change in the average conditions such as temperature and rainfall in a region over the long period of time. Earth's climate is always changing over long periods of time and has been hotter and cooler than it is now, but the pace of change has sped up significantly in recent decades. Scientists are deeply concerned about the changes they have observed since the Industrial Revolution. Human-caused climate change is, it's affecting the planet in ways that could alter all life on Earth. It is most urgent problem we face today. We should care about climate change because we are already experiencing its devastating effects. We are seeing warmer greater, warming greater than the global average on land and in waters. With that has come an increase in severity and frequency of storms, heat waves, wildfires, and heavy rains. These negative effects will worsen as the level of carbon pollution in our atmosphere continues to rise. Also, for the David Suzuki Foundation, in a recent WPR interview, the City of La Crosse Mayor Tim Cabot said, "Seeing the more often severe storm events and flooding and all of that, we have to deal with the effects of climate change. We don't have the luxury of arguing about politics, we have to get things done." Cabot went on to say that La Crosse does not have a total estimate for how much the initiative will cost the city. He said, "Any investment in more sustainable infrastructure will ultimately mean cost savings for residents." City Councilmember Kate Beaton of Eau Claire also in the WPR interview said, "It's impossible to know how much the initiative will cost cities before renewable technology continues to change." She said, "The cost of climate change is guaranteed to be higher. We're seeing communities who are having to repair their infrastructure now due to flooding or intense storms. So, we no longer have the luxury to decide that climate change's subsequent effects are a reality. The cost of doing nothing will be more expensive, and we will, and will do nothing to protect the health and safety of our citizens, current and future." Last but not least, Pablo Toral says, "Dear Members of the Beloit City Council, I commend you on the initiative to add carbon neutrality to the goals of the city's sustainability mandate. I also encourage you to follow the data from the U.S. Energy Information Agency as you draft your carbon neutrality plans so that you can best identify the areas where actions can be most effective. The sources of greenhouse gas emissions come from areas where our community can engage in very successful and active legislative and policy leadership. Electrical power at 40%, transportation at 34%, and residential and commercial at 26%. Federal, state, as well as private funds are available at the moment to fund climate initiatives in all these areas. More will come, we need to tap into those. Our energy transition from high-carbon intense energy mix to a low-carbon intense mix, potentially carbon neutral, needs to be a demographic, yet democratic and legitimate. To that end, I encourage you to engage a diverse group of stakeholders from our community to come up with a plan, as a successful strategy needs to build on those interests, concerns, and abilities of all members of our community. We have a lot of people in our community with the skills required to make this plan workable. The City Council is in a splendid position to lead as we bring all of these people together to elaborate a climate strategy that will give Beloit a brighter future." This ends written public comment, Madam President.
Thank you, Clerk Sotler. Next, we have members of the public that submitted a form to address the council this evening. The first person is Pastor Dave Fogderood. If you could come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Dave Fogderood. I'm the founding pastor and president of the Overflowing Cup in Beloit, Wisconsin. And we opened on April, well, go ahead. April 19th will be our 47th anniversary of serving the community, so. Okay, did you want me to go on?
Yeah, you can go ahead and get started. I know you had a couple items.
I got two, I got two items tonight. The second one is really short, but the first one probably deserves a, a point, a place on the agenda sometime. But I want to just say regarding homelessness in Rock County, and first of all, Madam President, I want to thank you all for letting me just share a couple things. Homelessness is a big issue. We've been serving the homeless for 47 years, and one of the things that's happened recently is having to put people in motels as a temporary Band-Aid. It's hard to turn a woman and two little children who are sleeping in a car. It's just difficult to just not do something for them.
Pastor Fogderood, I was about to say, you have to keep your mask on.
And the other thing is, for many years, we did operate the Harbor for the Homeless and so forth. But just a couple statistics. In 2019, we spent $2,524.97 on motels covering about 42 nights of service. In 2020, we spent $3,266.16 on covering about 54 nights of service. And just in January alone, we've spent $2,269.23 covering about 37, about 37 nights of service. And there's been more in February, and it never seems to end. But I think part of it was the cold spell that we had, which affected it. We get referrals from many different organizations, including Crisis, even though we refer people to Crisis when we get a chance. We need more donors, we need business donors, and we need personal donors. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and there's a definite shortage of temporary shelters. There's a, they're always full or something, and there's a waiting list. That's why we have to put people in a motel temporarily. Shortage of affordable housing. I just got to go on record to say we desperately need more affordable housing. Some of the people that we work with are actually have jobs, but they just can't even find an apartment. And there is money available for rental assistance and, and deposits, but there's not any money available to us for putting people in a motel. We also have a shortage of subsidized housing for people that are on disability or elderly. On the positive side, I want to say that I appreciate the economic growth and the development in Beloit and the Beloit area, and I just want to not discount that. If you knew me better, you'd know that I'm, I've got a business background, and I want to see the community thrive. But I don't want the community to overlook the poor, because there's always going to be needs like this with our particular generation of young people and older people as well. So, I just wanted to address this briefly and see if you can get the word out that include the Overflowing Cup in any kind of financial opportunities that come along. I noticed we're not included on the CDBG, but you know what? That's okay. There's other sources of income. There's, you know, even if it's putting a good word in for us someplace when it comes to getting grants or anything, that would help, because we do want to meet the needs. I guess that's all I need to say about that, because it's a pretty big issue. So, pray for the Overflowing Cup as we try to help other people. One of our mottos is help us to help others, and any gifts that would come our way would be tax deductible if it's important. The second issue is, last year, we canceled our Rock on the Rock Festival, which is held every August, and we, but it was on the agenda, but we respectfully canceled it because of the community rules and situations. We're, we're happy to cancel it again this year, but we want to be on the, we want the park reserved, the Harry Moore Pavilion reserved for August 14th and 15th, even though we don't know. But it's got to at least be reserved so that we've got our, our name on the list if we can have the event. So, that's all I'm asking on that. So, I just wanted to address the homelessness issue in Rock County, and it's not just a Beloit issue, it's not just a Janesville issue. I'm frustrated when I hear people say, "Well, they don't have a Janesville ID." Well, big deal. The money they're using is from, is for the whole Rock County. And the need is, is, is a county-wide need, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Pastor Dave.
Thank you much. Anything else?
No, I didn't want to cut you off, you're getting close to time. But thank you so much, appreciate what you do. Thank you. Next up, we have Susan Adams. Can you please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Susan Adams, I'm from the League of Women Voters. I am, I live at 703 Milwaukee Road. Tonight, I speak for our 60 members. Lori has already read all of the national positions, so I'm not going to repeat that. Just that we do stand behind the National League, and the League does believe that climate change is a serious threat, and we do have our programs, which she already talked about. But this is, this proclamation is a great first step. We will be watching closely the strategic planning process that you're going to do in June. Climate change resolutions and plans need to be an integral part of that strategic plan, and I know you're going to want community support. You've already read a lot, so I'm sure you'll have some volunteers. I'm confident that several League members would also be interested in participating in the volunteer committees that we will need, and I hope you can all join us on Thursday for our final segment in our climate series, and that you'll watch our first two, one of which was done by Pablo Toral, if you haven't watched them yet. We must act now to make a difference on climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Snyder. Greg, can you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Greg Schneider, I live at 703 Milwaukee Road here in Beloit. I just want to talk in favor of the proclamation for it becoming carbon neutral. Again, now you have the proclamation, now it needs to take action, and we need to put it into step. And there are some things that the city can do to help the citizens to be part of that. One would be working with Alliant Energy to make the application process much simpler than it is right now, and to help make it a little more affordable for citizens to put solar on their own homes to do that. And also, as you work forth with, within the city, but to get, to continue to partner with other large businesses or agencies or the school district to work together to, to reduce the carbon footprint. Again, most of the time, the larger the project, the cheaper it becomes to do that, so to partner with that. And also, I'm glad to hear that Alliant is retiring some of their coal plants. Hopefully, they'll retire them all. But we need to go to alternative energy instead of letting them build more natural gas plants, because they are almost as bad as coal is, so you're replacing one with the other. And so, switching them to natural gas plants is not going to help anybody get carbon neutral. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next, are there any members of the public who did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Can you please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Hengfeld, and I'm a Beloit resident. I'd like to require you to say my exact address.
Okay, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight, first of all. I'd like to speak against item 8D on the agenda. I almost missed it if it wasn't in the paper, so it's, it's an important item. I, I don't even know where to start with this. This is literally one of the most insane agenda items I've ever had to speak on, and I've spoken on a lot of agenda items in the last year. I've looked at the proposed changes very carefully today, and I can't see how anybody in their right mind would vote in favor of this. There's absolutely nothing in 8D that benefits the city or the residents in the event of an actual disaster. What it does, however, is give an unelected official substantially more power. I almost want to say unlimited power. It also takes away all accountability, all oversight. It also takes away those pesky open-meeting laws that have been overlooked in this last year. It doesn't take a history major to see how giving an unelected or any official, one person, unlimited power with zero accountability or transparency is a very, very, very bad idea. City councilors, if you happen to be listening, don't even consider voting yes on this. It's your job to keep brazen power grabs like this in check. There's absolutely nothing wrong with a current ordinance as it stands, it simply has to be enforced. It's time to enforce it and hold our city manager accountable for ignoring it for the last year. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the council this evening? Thank you all for coming, and I just want to thank the residents that submitted comments also online, so thank you. That said, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item six is the consent agenda, and all items listed-
Clerk Sotler, I have to back up and just say at this time, if there's no one else speaking on the record, the public comment is now closed. Now, I'll move forward with six, the consent agenda.
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council, like anything, remove from the consent agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items 6A through 6G? Is there a motion?
I don't think there's a motion.
Thank you. As well, I'd like to make that one. Then, if Councilor Prashil made the first motion, I will be glad to second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilor Prashil, a second by Councilor Blakely. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Prashil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. There are no licenses under item seven this evening, so item eight is ordinances. 8A is consideration of ordinance number 3694 approving an attachment petition for 1945 Prairie Avenue. This is second reading.
Okay, this is a second reading. So, we have Community Development Director Julie Christensen, who's available to answer any questions any councilors may have. Can I please have a motion to approve the ordinance first? Is there a motion?
Oh, man, you Forbeck, I vote for you.
I thought I heard Keys and Forbeck. Is that correct? Was there a motion?
There was a Blakely in there, Madam President.
Okay, I apologize. So, we have a motion by Councilor Blakely, and was it a second by Forbeck? By Councilor Forbeck?
Sure.
Okay, it was really hard to hear from here, so I apologize for that. So, with that said, we'll have questions and discussion at this time. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, all the information was contained in our packet.
No, all the information was contained in our packet.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just have an observation. This is per our boundary agreement with the Town and Turtle, and this is what happens when septic systems fail in a densely populated urban area. And this is a process we go through every time and individually by lot. So I just want to bring that out, put that on the record. So thank you.
At this-
If you can correct me if I'm wrong.
At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item 8B is consideration of ordinance number 3695 amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan for the property located at 3155 Prairie Avenue. This is also second reading.
Our Community Development Director Julie Christensen is available to answer any questions. Can I please have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Nancy Forbeck, I so move.
Move by Councilor Forbeck. Is there a second?
Levy, second.
Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there's a motion and second for this ordinance. Can I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Oh, there's the missing button. Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item 8C, consideration of ordinance number 3692 to create section 1.54 Sub 1M and 1.54 Sub 3 Sub D and to amend sections 1.52 Sub 2 and 1.52 Sub 3 Sub A of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the reorganization of the Community Development Department. This is first reading.
Thank you, Clerk Sotler. At this time, our city attorney, Elizabeth Kruger, will present.
This is just a cleanup item that's been sitting on my desk for a brief period of time. As you recall, in the last budget cycle, we had moved the Transit Division from the Public Works Department over to the Community Development Department. So this ordinance just memorializes that shift in the responsibility from the departments. And I will certainly be available to answer any questions that you have. But again, it's just a cleanup item to make sure the transition got moved in the ordinances from Public Works to the Community Development Department.
Thank you. This is a first reading. Can I please have a motion to lay this over? Is there a motion?
Levy moves to lay it over.
Okay, move by Councilor Levy, second by Councilor Pruschel. Now we'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not, Madam President.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I think Attorney Kruger explained it very well, and I understand it as just a matter of house cleaning, as it were. So after, when we vote, I will actually, depending on how the vote goes, will probably recommend that we vote on the ordinance itself this evening instead of carrying it over. Thank you.
Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, but I want to tell the public that this is, again, the staff in the council system of trying to make everything work well and make sense within the organization of the city. I think it's wonderful that we've got transit where we have moved it to now, and I'm proud of this move. Thank you.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I just, as Sherri said, since this memorializes what we've already decided in the budgeting and staffing process, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't just suspend the rules. I don't foresee anything changing our minds on this in the next two weeks or three weeks, whatever. So I would, I would withdraw my second and make a motion that we proceed with suspending the rules.
Can I please ask the clerk to clarify how that would-
Sure. So Councilor Levy made the motion to lay it over. Councilor Pruschel was the second. They would both need to remove their motion from the table in order to take a new motion to suspend the rules for a second reading.
This is Councilor Levy. I remove my original motion and make a motion to suspend the rules for this item.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilor Levy to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I will make that second this time. Thank you.
At this time, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Can I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
So the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading is passed unanimously, so that goes back to the motion to approve the ordinance as read.
So we need a motion and a second, am I correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so can we please get a motion regarding the ordinance, please? Is there a motion?
I so move. This is Councilor Blakely.
Move by Councilor Blakely. Is there a second?
Councilor Keys will second.
Second by Councilor Keys. That said, can I please ask the clerk to call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That ordinance passes unanimously. Item 8D is consideration of ordinance number 3691 to amend the title to section 1.10 Sub 4, to amend sections 1.10 Sub 4A, 1.10 Sub 4B6, 1.10 Sub 7, 1.10 Sub 9B, 1.10 Sub 9C1, to repeal and recreate, we recreate sections 1.10 Sub 6 and repeal sections 1.10 Sub 4 Sub B2 and 1.10 Sub 5 and 1.10 Sub 10 of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to emergency management. This is first reading.
Fire Chief Pease will present on this item.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, before I was formally appointed to, can we, can you hear me? Before I was formally appointed to Fire Chief, I was actually interim chief. I began a conversation with the police chief and the city manager in regards to the future of the emergency management. In an emergency response environment, routine daily systems and processes are often challenged. You know, staff is tasked to work in a rapid-paced setting for extended periods of time. Decisions are needed quickly with the context of unclear and incomplete information. You know, hiring, acquisitions, contracts and other business processes must be expedited. Working relationships need to be expanded to include new and internal and external partners. And, you know, we started talking about this, and then the pandemic happened, and, you know, we turned our attention to treating that pandemic. The proposed amendments to this ordinance are in keeping with FEMA guidelines and providing increased flexibility to deal with the number of non-traditional emergency attacks such as cyber attacks, domestic terrorism, et cetera. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief Pease, for presenting. Before we have questions from councilors, I know that our city manager, Luther, has some comments to add to that.
So I thought it was important to reference-
Your mic. Thank you.
I thought it was important to reference that I've been involved in leading emergency management efforts both before and after 9/11, when our country's response efforts shifted dramatically. In fact, in 25 years of experience in four different states, I've personally been involved in massive ice storms and widespread power outages, floods, airplane crashes, hazardous material spills, an officer shot in the line of duty who thankfully survived, a neighboring community's fatal school shooting, train derailment amongst others. And I can assure you that our team has the knowledge, skills and abilities, the experience and aptitude to lead these efforts. And depending upon the type of emergency that occurs, the appropriate individual will serve as the incident commander. For example, during typical snow emergencies, the Department of Public Works Director serves as incident command. This is not the first time that this role has been hosted in the city manager's office in the city of Beloit. Changing back from the fire department to the manager's office provides maximum flexibility and adaptability for the variety of emergencies that we must both plan and prepare for, mitigate against, and ultimately respond to should the need arise. Policy issues have and will continue to be presented to the city council for action. For example, the face covering requirements that became a safety requirement in the city of Beloit was approved by resolution. And any time an emergency is declared, it is the rare circumstance that that declaration is made prior to the council ultimately approving that action and taking that into consideration. A couple of examples of incidents unrelated to COVID-19, which remains the anomaly, would be the collapse that we experienced where the roadway started to erode into the edge of the cliff on Shore Drive. That required an emergency declaration that was followed by council approval within a matter of days so that we could bring in a contractor with the ability to remove the multiple truckloads of fill that was required, pardon, bring in, not remove, bring in the fill that was required to stabilize that bank and to preserve that roadway. So we are in an environment where the emergencies we anticipate are no longer simply the, I say simply, are no longer the traditional emergencies that are faced in a fire and a police department alone. The fear and need to prepare for cyber attack is real, and our information technology department has become integral in all of our efforts. Emergency management is a highly specialized, professional area of study. This is why we created the position of emergency management coordinator so that we ensure that we are compliant with all federal and state guidelines, record-keeping, ensure that we receive maximum reimbursement for any federal or state declaration, and ultimately maintain compliance with all of these rules and regulations. The council maintains and would continue to have appropriate oversight of these activities. And again, all policy actions would be taking place in a public setting with appropriately duly noticed meetings, et cetera. I know that Chief Pease and I are happy to answer any questions, and I believe Chief Stigler is available as well.
Okay, at this time, this is a first reading, so can I please have a motion to lay this over?
This is Nancy Forbeck, and I make a motion to suspend the rule.
Okay, there is a motion to suspend the rules, so is there a second?
I will make a second on that.
Okay, so there's a motion to suspend the rules from Councilor Forbeck. There's a second from Councilor Pruschel. At this time, I'd like to ask councilors if they have any questions or discussion on the motion to suspend the rules, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Not on this motion, but I will when we discuss the merits of it.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Madam President, could you, could you clarify what the motion is once again?
This motion is to suspend the rules, if you like. Clerk Sotler, can you please clarify?
Yes, Madam President. So whenever we have a first reading of an ordinance, Councilor Blakely, you usually lay it over to the next regular meeting. In order to suspend the rules for a second reading at the next meeting and adoption, this motion would allow you to take that ordinance up this evening.
Thank you.
Councilor Forbeck.
May I make a comment? May I make a comment on this motion, then?
Sure. At this time, you can, if you have any questions or comments, you can make them at this time.
Oh, thank you. I'm all in favor of hearing from the people of Beloit, and I myself, and I'm sure the other councilors and city staff members have gotten a lot of feedback about this particular matter. I think perhaps we have heard from everyone who wants to speak up about it, but just in case, I would favor holding it over rather than suspending the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Blakely. Next, Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I second Sherri, Councilor Blakely, and appreciating just hearing back from the community. And so I will likely be in favor of laying it over.
Thank you, Councilor Keys. Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I, again, second the motion because I don't foresee us changing our minds on this, or even with the public input we've had, and I've seen today and outcome today, about half of it came from non-city residents, which is interesting, and most of it seemed to be targeting some animus towards our city manager, which I didn't appreciate, and I didn't find it persuasive. In fact, I found very few arguments persuasive. I found very few arguments based in- I found very few arguments based in facts. This is basically memorializing how it's conducted now. It's simplifying things greatly, and that's important when you're dealing with emergency management. And for all those reasons, since I don't foresee us changing our minds on any of this, I just want to go ahead and get this voted on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pruschel. And now, my comments. I just wanted to add that this ordinance recognizes the 2021 adopted budget and creation of the new Emergency Management Coordinator professional position that's held by Patty Miller, who reports directly to the city manager. Tonight, we heard whether the Fire Chief and Police Chief both support this change, which was previously held in the city manager's office. And in my thinking, if a tornado, flood, or cyber attack occurs, that is not the time to convene a committee. We need to be able to act promptly for the safety of all of our Beloit residents. Certainly, emergency management is a specialized profession. We're fortunate to have staff with this specific education and skill set who will be reporting to our council. And I believe from what I'm hearing also from that, that the council will have direct oversight. So, with that said, I will ask Clerk Treasurer Stotler to please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
So, on the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading, Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes five-two. So now, on the adoption of the ordinance itself.
I will now entertain a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Pruschel, is there a second?
Councilor Keys, second.
Was that Councilor Levy? Councilor Levy, I think, with the second. So, at this time, I will ask the clerk to... Just a second. I believe I have to get questions and discussion at this time on that. So, we will begin with Vice President Anderson. For clarity, I'm going to get questions and discussion from councilors. So, councilors, Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I mostly comment because I do appreciate the city manager explaining the process. I think there's a lot of miscommunication and misunderstanding about what this entails. I also want to thank our Chief, Chief Pease, for examining our ordinances. Ever since you've joined the fire department as interim and now chief, you've made our city safer by looking through the ordinances we have and improving them, because public safety is very important. So, thank you for that. Let's be clear, this does make Beloit safer, more equipped to handle an emergency. This was desperately needed, and this just cleans up the language. I'm absolutely supportive of this.
Next, Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I believe we have heard, as I said, from several outspoken city residents. What Councilor Pruschel said about the animus some of them expressed toward our city manager, unfortunately, I received that too. And that I do not stand behind, because our city manager and our team of emergency officers, the chiefs of the fire department and police department, as well as Patty Miller, have really done an excellent job steering us, charting the course, and then steering us through this surprising and frightening time of the pandemic. So, that is what I want to say at this point, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilor Blakely. Next, Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I think it is really too bad that I believe that the citizens, and I read also their passionate and angry letters that were emails that were sent to us. They really have things... Talking about things that aren't right. I don't know where they got this information, but I hope everybody can understand that I stand behind our city manager, our chief of police, and our fire chief, saying that this is what is best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Forbeck. Next, Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do have a comment from the public commentary received. It just seemed that there was a lot of confusion as towards the intent and rationale behind this ordinance change. The explanation and presentation by City Manager Luther was excellent, as well as Chief Pease, and that additional time for that clarification was the thought process for myself with the prior vote. With this vote, I feel that our city leadership and City Manager Luther has done an excellent job navigating a very uncertain time, and we've, at every step of the COVID response, has put the safety and health of the city at highest priority. And as it was said, the emergencies that may come our way vary greatly, and so I am supportive of this ordinance change.
Thank you, Councilor Keys. Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor... Thank you, Councilor Levy. Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I'll say I didn't expect this item to be... Generate any kind of controversy. It seemed pretty straightforward when I read the packet last week. I was totally stunned today when I got all those emails from people. I don't know if I was stunned by the emails, but as much as I was by the contents and by some of the animus, and I don't know, I just... Where does this come from? I should get used to this after the last four years, but I'm not yet. I just, you know, it's basically what's been going on the last five years. We're finding ways to make Beloit better. Chief Pease, Chief Stigler, Zabalski beforehand, Lori, things have changed in Beloit. They're going to continue to change. We want to continue to get better. We're going to up our game. It's important that we do that. You know, this last week, I looked at something to do with the Janesville City Council, and I'm like, I'm looking at their pictures, and I'm looking at our pictures, and I was like, wow, look at the difference here. This is like the 21st century here in Beloit. And Janesville's like, what? Anyway, I'll set beside the point and off the topic. But I want people to know that we are doing the right things, we are paying attention, and I don't know where you get some of these crazy notions. So, anyway, off my soapbox, somebody's got to say it, might as well be me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pruschel. And I didn't have any comments, but I know that City Manager Luther has something to add. Can you go ahead, City Manager Luther?
I neglected to correct earlier, and I don't always make a point of trying to correct every statement that's made, but I think it is important to know that this item was properly agendized, it was sent to the Beloit Daily News, it was referenced in an article, I believe it was, yesterday. So, any misunderstanding, I want to make sure that it is absolutely clear that this was in the published agenda packet, that all of those documents are open and available to the public, and this was sent to the newspaper along with every other item as we typically do. So, all of that information was made publicly available, and just wanted to make sure that that was corrected for the record.
Thank you, City Manager Luther, for that clarification. At this time, we have a motion and a second. Can I please ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The ordinance passes unanimously. Item 8E is consideration of ordinance number 3699, repealing Section 1.73 Sub-1 Sub-D Point 4 of the Code of General Ordinances for the city of Beloit pertaining to the Board of Ethics. This is first reading.
Next, our city attorney, Elizabeth Krieger, will present.
I serve as a staff liaison to the Board of Ethics, and at their annual meeting, they had requested the ability for the citizen members to be able to serve on another board, commission, or committee. Currently, there is the rule that is applicable to most of our committees, that you can only serve on one committee at a time. The Board of Ethics meets, however, just once a year for annual reorganization, but then does not meet unless there is a complaint filed. And so, the two citizen members that sit on that committee may never actually attend a meeting other than that annual meeting. So, we were supportive of the idea of letting those two citizen members serve on another board, commission, or committee, and have drafted this proposed ordinance to allow that.
Thank you. This is a first reading. Can I please have a motion to lay over?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Pruschel, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Levy. Now, we'll take questions and discussions from the councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Councilor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, Madam President, thank you. Oh, pardon me, I do. To Attorney Krueger, this is just, of course, and this would be ethical, correct? I know I'm making a terrible pun here, but it's a serious question. There would be no conflict of interest for anyone...
So merely... Yes, so merely...
Yes.
So merely serving on another board, committee, or commission would not present an ethical issue for an individual member. If, however, as with any case, if someone were to have a conflict, they would need to recuse themselves from any discussion related to that. But the simple service on more than one committee is based on an ordinance and not based on any ethical practice. So by changing the ordinance, you're just simply allowing the two members to serve on an alternative board, committee, or commission.
Thank you. I would like to say then that I would prefer to suspend the rules on this and call for a vote this evening. I'll just mention that.
Okay. Next, Councilor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No questions but a comment. I will withdraw my second if we wanted to move this forward.
Okay. We'll do that once we go through and get comments and questions from councilors first, and then we'll have the clerk treasurer to clarify what action needs to go next. Thank you, Councilor Levy. Councilor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, I honestly, when I saw this, I thought we already did this years ago, but perhaps that was a different committee where we allowed somebody to serve on another committee. Or maybe it was when I was on the committee on committees back in 2002. It took 19 years to get here, that's okay. But anyway, yes, that's the case, and Beth is confident that the ethical dilemma is taken care of as far as, you know, serving on multiple committees might go. I would withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Pruschel. At this time, and I don't have any comments, I would echo the same thing you said as well, Councilor Pruschel, as far as long as we're ethically doing what we should on our end, that works for me. So, Clerk Treasurer Stotler, can you please clarify where we're at and what action needs to be taken at this time?
Yes, Madam President. So, Councilor Pruschel and Councilor Levy have rescinded their motion, so there would need to be a motion made to suspend the rules for a second reading before we vote on the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
I make that motion. This is Councilor Blakely.
I think it was moved by Levy and seconded by Blakely. Can I please ask the clerk to call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
The vote to suspend the rules for a second reading passes unanimously, and now we'll need a motion on the ordinance.
Okay. Can I please get a motion... Can I get a motion on the ordinance?
Levy move.
Moved by Councilor Levy, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Pruschel. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
Aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And for the record, was that Blakely that did the second? I'm sorry.
No, I believe it was Pruschel, Lori. Is that right, Lori?
It was Pruschel.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Moving on to appointments, there is only one appointment this evening. It is to the Equal Opportunities Commission, and it is Angela Lannan. She is replacing John McHorko Jr. to a term ending June 30th, 2022.
Levy moves approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
For the appointments, we have approval by Councilor Levy and a second by Councilor Pruschel. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the appointments. Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Forbeck.
An enthusiastic aye.
Councilor Keys.
Aye.
Councilor Levy.
Aye.
Councilor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item 10 is counselor activities and upcoming events.
At this time, I would like to ask councilors to also share their committee reports, if they would, beginning with Vice President Anderson.
I'll try to keep it short, because I think we're pretty much all tired here. First off, just want to thank staff on their proclamation for carbon neutrality. Really quick work, great job, as usual. Next thing is, I want to congratulate one of our BYHAJ hockey teams, the Rock County Raptors, on winning a state title at the varsity level. Great work. I got the privilege to coach many of those kids, and the head coach, Oscar Delgado, coached me last year. It's a great group of people. Congratulations to them. And as second winter ends, begin to enjoy the parks. I was out before second winter hit at Big Hill Park, walking that. Go enjoy it, get some fresh air. It's a beautiful place. The kids I work with for my day job, I take them there, they love it too. They highly recommend it. The last thing is, join our committees. You know, we had a lot of people with so many comments, you know, instead of just saying something, wanting to do something, get on our committees. We have openings, there's plenty of space left for people of diverse backgrounds and opinions. Get on our committees. And that ends my public comment. I mean, my activity, yeah. All night.
Next, Councilor Blakely.
Thank you, Madam President. And, Councilor Anderson, thank you for mentioning our second winter. Oh, my goodness. At any rate, I agree essentially with what you said, and congratulations to the hockey team. I want to thank all the residents, all the citizens who have taken the time to write us, to call us, to appear in person at the council meeting. Local government, like all levels of government, rely on input from citizens. And so, whether or not you agree with something that council is considering, I appreciate your speaking out and letting us know where you stand and why. I also want to especially thank Pastor Dave for his presentation and for the work that he and the overflowing cup do for the community. he and the overflowing cup do for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Forbeck.
Oh, I just want to give a shout out to the downtown belief association in running the winter farmer's market. I am delighted, you know, really, it wasn't too long ago that only big cities could have a winter farmer's market. And I think that we have been clever and have worked hard with our partner farms and the people who sell at our farmer's market to keep on with this. And I want to say kudos to them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Forbeck. Next, Counselor Keys.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I also want to thank all community members who took the time to participate in tonight's meeting, attending in person and writing in. Related to the carbon neutrality proclamation, it was inspiring to hear from a broad group of community members and the community support behind that in achieving that goal. I truly believe that this proclamation is a critical step, a step forward in the race to combat the current climate crisis. And action now will result in a safer, healthier, and more resilient Beloit in the years to come. Second, I want to highlight that March is Women's History Month and that we just observed International Women's Day. And along with many other trailblazers, our very own city manager, Lori Luther, council president, Regina Duncan, and Beloit Police Sergeant Linda were highlighted for their accomplishments and contributions to our community. So congratulations with that recognition. And to all women and girls in Beloit, keep blazing your own trails. Third, I want to thank and highlight all city employees and community partners. Beloit Meals on Wheels and Community Action was helping the city reach some of our most vulnerable, providing access to COVID-19 vaccine. There were many stories of joy and happiness associated with this effort, and I'm very proud and thankful for all involved. One, sorry. Another exciting opportunity for community members to get involved is that the SLAT, State Line Area Transportation Study, is in the process of updating their long-range transportation plan. And there's opportunity for community involvement and to participate in an online survey that can be accessed through the city's Facebook site. And I encourage everyone to participate. And finally, there was, I don't have any commission, the Parks, Recs, and Conservation Commission did not meet, and we're hopeful to meet next month. And this ends my report, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
No report.
Okay, Counselor Pruschel.
Well, I would like to report that we might be having a traffic review committee meeting here in the future. I'm looking forward to it. I've been waiting anxiously for that to happen here. And hopefully, we'll get that going again or some, you know, some checkout future on that. This Beloit has moved into its new digs at the former Angel Museum site. They're in the lower level now, and they're still working on some improvements to the upper level, seeing that finished off for event space. And of course, I've been outriding my bike, and the new river path is clear and obstruction free. And you might want to watch for some glass along the path as things come out of the snow. That happens every spring. So that's all I have for now. I would just like to remind everyone to live the life you want the future to bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And now my comments. First, I want to say that I am happy that tonight, my oldest granddaughter Ariana joined in tonight. It meant a lot to me, and I just want to say that to Ariana, if she's watching, she went home, left a little earlier, but one day she'll be here taking my seat on the council or at the White House. And I just want to let her know that she can do and be whatever she wants to and any other young girls that are watching tonight. And it also was certainly a surprise treat to see Tom join in and come with her tonight. So Tom, I love you both and thank you for being here with me tonight when I gave my first State of the City address. I was unable to do that last year, so it was just a nice surprise. Next, I'll begin with my report. I attended virtual meetings with the Greater Beloit Economic Development Committee, the Finance and Investment Committee meeting, and a couple of other meetings with some of our collaborative partners. I also attended the Appointment Review Committee meeting. So if you're interested in putting your talent to good use, you can volunteer to serve on one of our boards or commissions. You just can call Pam Lathrop, who's our executive assistant, at 608-364-6614. Next, I want to echo Happy Women's Month to all the women that work and volunteer for the City of Beloit, our city counselors, and all the girls and women who are helping every day to make our world better. That said, I also want to recognize Counselor Sheri Blakely, who received an honorable mention in the 2020 Poetry Contest from the Wisconsin Academy of Sciences, Arts, and Letters. Counselor Blakely has a special gift of writing. Way to go, Sheri, and congratulations. Also, I want to give a shout out to Landon and his mom, Tracy Bliss, who cleaned up two streets and fields in their neighborhood, and also the Beloit Plogging Group. And I know Little Caroline joined in too with Counselor Keys. So kudos to all of them. I am also very proud that our city council gave a proclamation to acknowledge the intent of the City of Beloit to be carbon neutral, showing that we are truly all in this together. Future action will involve the city manager, our entire council, staff, and members of the public, so much to look forward to. In addition, I want to give heartfelt thanks to our city manager, emergency management coordinator, Patty Miller, paramedics, community action, and Meals on Wheels for their efforts to ensure that some of our homebound residents had access to the COVID-19 vaccine. This is another step in the right direction and will certainly help us move forward. So thanks to you all for your diligence and hard work. This ends my report for this evening. Next, we'll go to item 11.
There is no city manager's presentation this evening, so item 12 is reports from city officers and boards. 12A is consideration of resolution 2021-035, approving a temporary price reduction for student semester passes.
Next, we'll have a report from our Deputy Director of Community Development, Terry Downing.
Hello again, everyone. The semester pass sold by Beloit Transit System allows unlimited rides to students during the duration of the semester. The existing fares are included in the master fee schedule, which is attached to the staff report. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, no in-person classes have been held during the spring semester yet. The school district of Beloit is resuming in-person classes on April 8th. In-person classes will only be held for about half of the duration of a typical school semester, which is approximately five and a half months. We would like to reduce the fee for the semester pass from $85 to half of that, for for half of that to $42.50 for the 2021 spring semester, since they'll only be able to use it for about half the time. So there is a resolution attached, and that is what we're requesting your consideration and approval for today.
Thank you, Terry. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I still move the amendment before I move Blakely.
Okay. I believe it was Counselor Blakely sounded first, from what we could hear, and it was seconded by Counselor Forbeck.
It was a photo finish, but I'll go for that.
Okay. So now we'll take questions and discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I'm just glad we're doing it.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion? Counselor Pruschel, do you have any?
Hold on one second. We've lost connectivity here.
It seems that we're having some technical difficulties, so just bear with us.
Regina, lost your mic.
Okay. We should be back now. I think you were with Counselor Keys.
I'll go back to, yeah. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No comments. Thanks for bringing this, well, thanks for bringing this forward. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I was just wondering, Terry, with the golf course, we've arranged things so that they had more autonomy on setting their fees for promotional purposes, et cetera. And is there anything like that that would, you know, we can change in the future that would make this an easier process for you as the manager of Beloit Transit System to do things like promotions and special rates and all that kind of weird stuff that you can't handle in an ordinance that's structured like ours? And maybe the federal government won't let us do that. So that was my question.
There's no federal rules that prohibit anything like that. I think it would be Manager Luther's decision if she wanted to look at that and see if there's anything that we wouldn't need to bring back to council, but I'm willing to discuss that and.
It was just something that they never tried at the golf course because it was structured so awkwardly for them to do so. And then once it became a little more flexible form, they could do things and I think it paid dividends over a couple, three years or done. So anyway, it's just one of those things, thinking like a business, like a marketing operation that you do.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. At this time, I believe Attorney Kruger has a comment to make.
I was just going to mention that the park and rec was by ordinance that we created that flexibility. If the flexibility, because transit's a little bit different, we would have to work that into any kind of fee schedule, but that's certainly an opportunity and one that we were contemplating with this ask about whether or not we needed to do that moving forward. So we will look into that for the 2022 schedule of fees.
Thank you.
You guys are so good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
For item 12B, we have consideration of resolution 2021-036, awarding the sale of $1,135,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2021A.
Thank you very much, Clerk Stotler. At this time, our finance director, Eric Miller, is here this evening, and he will introduce the financial consultant and also give us a report. Thanks, Eric, for being here.
You're welcome and good evening. So on February 1st, we approved the initial resolutions for the 2021 debt issuances. We held our annual ratings call with Standard and Poor's, and they affirmed our AA- credit rating. And so today, we took the issuance to the open market for sale. And at this point, I would just like to turn it over to Dawn Gunderson from Ellers, and she'll go through the sale day reports for both the 2021A and 2021B issues.
Thank you. So welcome, Dawn.
Thank you, and thank you, Eric. On your screen, we have a sale day report that recaptures the results of today's sale. I will also note that you'll notice on that first page, our promissory note issue 2021A is for a dollar amount of $1,120,000. That resolution that was prepared for your draft, as a draft for your agenda, has been updated today with the results of the sale by your bond attorneys at Corals and Brady. So your consideration this evening will be for a resolution to approve the sale in the amount of $1,120,000 for this issue. If you would advance to the next page, thank you. So here is a basic recap of the results of the sale. We did take bids at 10 o'clock this morning. We had three bids on the promissory note issue. Our winning bid was from Baird, and they bid this out of their banking in New Jersey. And we always award on the TIC, the lowest TIC. And a comparison here, our low TIC with Baird was 1.1771. Our high bid was 155, a difference of about $25,000, to give you a sense of the difference between our high and our low. Moving on down this page, we noted that we were able to downsize the issue by 15,000, and that was based on the bid results that we received. Advancing to the next page is a recap of the bids, and they're listed from the low bid to the high bid, with Baird being, again, that winning bidder, and the TIC is identified on the far right side of this page, and that is the comparison between the other bids. We received a bid in addition to Baird from Huntington Investments out of Columbus, Ohio. Morgan Stanley out of New York was our third bid. So we had not just regional, but a larger interest out of New York in this issue as well. Advancing to the next page, this, while it probably is difficult if you're viewing it on a screen, is it recaps both of the two issues here. The one we'll refer to initially is on the left-hand side. It compares our preliminary sizing with our final sizing. And because we had this premium bidding come in, we were able to lower the issue size by that 15,000. So it compares on the bottom of the schedule, the difference between our planning estimates at $1,135,000 and our final sale at $1,120,000. And it's financing your 2021 capital projects. Advancing to the next slide, well, I don't expect, or the next screen page. This is breaking the purposes out. This is more important for your financing staff than I think it is meaningful to see the elected body here, but it breaks it out by the types of purposes for your capital projects. We did have some additional funds, those bracketed in red are additional excess premium that will be used to reduce interest expense and applied to make payments on those going forward for the next couple of years. Advancing to the next page, this includes both issues, but it recaps the actual results of the sale and compares it at the bottom to the preliminary planning. For the note issue, we reduced the issue size by 15,000. With the premium bid, our interest is a little bit higher, allowing us to reduce the principal though, and having that excess premium, the overall cost of the issue is $17,891 less than our planning estimates. The, we'll cover the B issue as we look at the second pre-sale report, but the next slide, or next page of the schedule is the future debt as we had built it out with your capital improvement plan, just so you can kind of get a sense of where the future projections were on levy. And the last few pages, and this is included on both of these reports, is that, on the next schedule, is the rating report from Standard and Poor's. So if you have not had an opportunity to read this, if you can obtain a copy of this report and take the time to read this, it presents the credit quality for the City of Beloit. It's kind of like your rating report for your, or your credit score. You're at a AA- with S and P. This was an upgrade that we received last year, and they affirmed that rating. It certainly is meaningful when it comes to the interest. It certainly is meaningful when it comes to the interest rates that you received on today's issue on both of these issues. And we'll talk a little bit further on that when we look at the B issue. But as we compare this to other sales that we've had over the last several months that are comparable rating, Beloit actually did better than the average we've seen on other issues as we benchmark that to a AAA rating. So something to be very proud of in terms of your current financial position. So congratulations to that.
Don, can I interrupt you for one minute? I just, I just want to take a moment. We didn't have an opportunity to really appropriately celebrate the bond rating improvement last year because we were in the midst of figuring out what COVID-19 was. And I appreciate your mentioning that. I just wanted to state again how immensely proud I am of our entire staff, of the council making this a priority. And it really speaks to fiscally conservative financial policies to place the city in the best financial position possible. So it felt a little anticlimactic last year when we received the news. It's been well over a decade since the city has received a bond rating improvement. And to have our borrowing interest rates really mirroring those AAA communities, that is, it's something to be immensely proud of. So thank you for indulging me. This is something we've really worked hard towards, and thank you for acknowledging that.
It is definitely something you should be very proud of. I, and you'll see, I think it's probably more meaningful with the second issue results today. And I'll go over this. I know it's your second resolution, but I'll do the full presentation, then you can consider the resolutions. But the B issue is the bond purposes for your 2021 capital, as well as an opportunity to do some refunding. So again, this is an issue that you'll see that the dollar amount for the issue itself is significantly lower than what was identified on your your agenda. This issue, when we went to market this morning, was sized, and your agenda will note that it was $13,865,000. You'll see that we're actually proving, for consideration this evening, $12,940,000. We were able to reduce the bond size by the results of today's sale, and I'll explain that in a moment as we go through the schedules. But if you'll, on the second page then is the summary. Once again, here, your rating played an important fact in this. We had six bids. Baird out of New Jersey was the winning bid on this one as well. Our TIC, and this is for 20-year financing, was 1.2317% in average TIC. So that's quite positive. Our high bid was 1.4392, a difference of $187,000. So it's, you know, it's real money when you start looking at it, when you start comparing high to low on a competitive basis. Again, we had a premium bid on this, and we were able to downsize the principal amount by 925,000. The premium bid is where they provide cash upfront in exchange for couponing rates. And we're in an environment right now where this is quite common, a premium bid. So we're able to use that extra funds to downsize the issue. Moving then to the second schedule, it's recapping our six bids. And I think this is very positive to have the interest that we had on this issue for the city of Beloit. We haven't always seen this in the past, but our winning bid again was from Baird in New Jersey. Again, the TIC is in the far right. The second list of, the next page is the remaining bids. We had Baker Group out of Oklahoma, Huntington Investments out of Columbus, Ohio, Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas, Key Bank out of Cleveland, and Morgan Stanley out of New York. So that shows you that there was not only regional interest, but national interest in bidding on this issue. So I think that that is a tribute to that rating as well. As investors look at issues they're going to bid on, they look at the credit quality of the issuer. Again, this schedule is the same as previous, but we'll, on the far right, you'll see the difference between our preliminary planning and our final. Again, it was the underwriter premium that we received that was the primary reason for reducing the issue size, as well as some of our estimated expenses were lower than our preliminary planning. So that brought our sizing down at the $12,940,000. The next schedule again is a breakout of what the purposes were. We have streets, park, some land acquisition for economic development, and our refunding piece and components included in this schedule. The next page is the savings analysis for each of the issues, and I'll spend a moment to talk about each of these. We did a refinancing, a current refinancing of the 2009 issue. There was some cash applied to this. The total savings for this issue, including that cash, was $288,905. It included some, meant higher than our, savings was greater than our preliminary planning by about $22,000. The levy piece of it is $120,000 savings, and that's up from our planning estimates at $116,000, so about $4,000 additional savings for just the levy piece. On the next page is the 2012 bond issue. Here again, this was done for savings purposes. Again, there was some cash applied for the utility pieces of this issue. But our total savings, including that cash, was $820,000, up from the 730 we were estimating. The levy piece of that alone is $324,000, up from the $233,000 that we were estimating. So those are real dollar savings in terms of the levy debt issuance for what was outstanding to what is current. And the next page is the 2013A issue. This has about $453,000 savings, and this again had some cash applied, $402, reflecting the levy piece on here, but I have to apologize if there is some additional levy savings related to the library component of this, and it didn't get tallied into this. So there, I will provide Eric with an updated report on this tomorrow, but there are some additional savings that will be benefiting your levy in this refunding as well. And the next page then is the last refunded issue, the 2013D. Again, this was done for savings. There's some cash applied for the utilities piece of these, so they're utilizing cash to reduce their future debt service payments. The total savings for this was $740,000, up from our estimate of $539. And the levy piece of this was $589,000, up from the $388 that we estimated. So some pretty significant savings. Interest rates have risen since we set the sale, but the results today were, we had enough kind of cushion in there for market movement that we exceeded our planning estimates as well, when you authorized us to move forward with the sale. The next couple of schedules attached again include both of the issues and the tax levy impact of this. So this combines the new structure on the A issue and the B issue that's in green. On the bottom for the green, we did reduce the bond size because of that premium and the couponing. Our interest was a little higher, but overall, the issue was $400,000 less than our estimates when we were here with the planning a month, when we authorized proceed with the sale. So both of these issues came out better than our initial anticipation at the time we set the sale. The remaining of this report is identical to the last one. It includes the rating report and any future financing as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have, but I want to congratulate you on the results of today's sale.
Thank you, Don, for that very thorough report. Why don't we take the first, let's take a motion, and then we'll do questions on item 12B. Can you read that one off, Clerk Stotler?
So 12B is consideration of resolution 2021-036, awarding the sale of $1,135,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2021A.
Okay. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Pruschel. Is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Seconded by Counselor Keys. At this time, I'll take questions and discussion from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yeah, first off, I, you know, we do this every year, and I know Eric Miller, this is probably your second favorite time of year between this and the budget. I'm sure if you had to pick one, it'd be tough for you to choose. I'm also very excited about the bond rating. I know, as City Manager Luther said, it was just as COVID hit. This is something I, as a new council member several years ago, thought it was just magically easy to increase the bond rating and asked about it. And here we are several years later. It is quite the challenge. I've learned quite a bit. I did have a question. I know there's probably not a clear answer to this, but I'm just very curious. So, Don or Eric, if you can answer this. If we still had that old bond rating, how much would the interest rate have changed if we went to the market this time? If you can answer. I know it's probably not a clear answer, but kind of give me an idea.
Just a minute.
Erica, I'll try to fill this one. The significant thing with this bond rating increase is you went from the A category of a rating to a AA category. So, you know, without actually doing some comparisons right now, that can range anywhere from 10 to maybe 25 basis points different on a year-to-year basis. So, you know, I think it's pretty significant. Now, when you move from like an A- to, a AA- to a AA, you know, you could see five to 10 basis points, but there's a bigger notch from where you were before at an A+ to a AA-. So in terms of overall dollars, I could probably run some analysis for you, but I wouldn't have any answer for that now. I also want to just make one comment while you're considering this resolution. Your actual authorization is for the $1,120,000 on this for the actual sale, and the second one will also be for the lower dollar amount.
Thank you for that. I knew there wasn't a clear answer. That's why I was curious, but that did help me out quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Anderson. Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, just very proud of our staff. Thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No question, just a comment on how great a work, how much hard work was put into this, and how much, between the two, the overall presentation, just how much money was saved. And so I truly appreciate all the hard work that benefits everybody in Beloit. So, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Well, Don's heard me talk about the, what Wall Street thinks of this portion of these reports before in the past, I'm sure. And I always get a kick out of reading this. You can see all the surveys you want about how great or how bad Beloit is, but this is what Wall Street thinks of Beloit, and this is real money, like in major ways. And I'm just really happy to see us improving and moving on down. I did notice in the last five, this is the fifth time I've done this, so I noticed that there was a broader scope of bidders on the bond issuance, and I think Don mentioned that earlier. And it wasn't just, it was geographic. I remember one bond issuance we had a few years ago. We had three firms. I think they were all in Wisconsin, or maybe one was in Michigan or something. But this is far afield, and I think that's a tribute to the higher bond rating we have now and better prospects for our future. So anyway, I'm just thrilled, and it's great to see, and thank you, Eric, and Don too, for keeping this interesting because really, I really don't care about finances. Money is just a complication to my life. So my wife takes care of it, and it's good to see that our city staff and our city manager and Eric in particular are taking care of Beloit's. So thank you. And Don can comment if she wants to.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And I just want to thank Don and Eric as well to be able to pull these reports together and with such a great rating, especially despite the challenges of COVID. So thank you very much for that. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. And just for the record, this is awarding the sale of $1,120,000 in general obligation promissory notes. So Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
A promissory to vote aye.
And President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously 7-0. Item 12C is consideration of resolution 2021-037, awarding the sale of $12,940,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2021B.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. At this time, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Levy.
Move by Counselor Levy. Is there a second?
Second, Nancy Forbeck.
Second by Counselor Forbeck. At this time, I'll take questions and discussions from councilors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Vice President Anderson, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Nope, not at this time.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I'm going to burn out of this one.
Okay. At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously 7-0. Item 13 is adjournment.
Yes, but before we adjourn, I just want to thank Eric Miller and the staff and Lori and everybody for their hard work. You made this budget process, again, with the bond rating and the bond seamless, but we know it's a lot of work that goes on behind, that happens behind the scenes to make this exceptional. So thank you. That said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Move by Counselor Pruschel. Is there a second?
Second, Counselor Keys.
Seconded by Counselor Keys. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are now adjourned, and this ends our city council meeting for this evening. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.